Do we have our quorum? Not yet.
Hello? Hello?
Mayor Pro Tem Bridges, do you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Is Commissioner Galt with us also? Okay. Good morning, I'd like to call to order the July 14, 2020, meeting of the RTC Board of Commissioners. I'd like to begin by noting that Mayor Pro Tem Bridges and Councilman Galt are calling in today. Otherwise, MJ, we're ready to get started.
Thank you, Chairman. Mayor of the Commission, your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
Thank you, MJ. This is the first time set aside for public comment on items included on the agenda. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on a posted item, now is your opportunity to come forward. Come to the microphone, state your comments with your name for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak on an item on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to approve your agenda. It's in order and ready for your approval.
Any questions or comments, or can I have a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And that motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to receive the CEO report. And today, we would like to recognize an operator from our contractor, MV Transportation. To present that item, we have a video prepared by Deputy CEO Francis Julian.
Thank you, MJ. This month, we're celebrating a driver from Peritransit. His name is Robert Clement. Robert started. He has a perfect attendance, never had an accident. So let's go and celebrate Robert with our manager, Whitley Mudambi.
Thank you, Francis. I'm over here at IBMF, MV Transportation. Let's go inside and surprise Robert. Hi, Robert. Hi, I'm from RTC. We're here to present you with an award for this month for being a safe operator with zero tenant incidents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've worked for MV Transportation for over two and a half years. I drove a school bus for over 13 years, and I really appreciate this.
And Francis, I believe Mr. Clement is here?
Yes, Robert's right up front here.
Yay, Robert!
Would you like to come forward and say a few words? If you come to the podium and just say a few words, we appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Would you like to say something to your family and your community?
Not necessarily.
Okay. All right.
Thank you again.
Well, thank you very much. We're proud of you.
Thank you. So the remainder of the CEO report will be presented by John, otherwise known as JP Penuelis. He's RTC's Director of Engineering Services. He's going to provide you with the roadway funding progress report and capital investment program fiscal year 2023 update. JP?
Yes, thank you, MJ. Good morning, Chairwoman March, members of the board, to John Penuelis again, RTC Director of Engineering for the record. I'd like to begin with our fourth quarter roadway funding update by sharing our total roadway projects to date. Since 2014, 601 roadway projects have been started, with 344 of those being completed. These projects are made possible by all local funding sources, which of course includes fuel revenue indexing, motor vehicle fuel tax, and sales tax. As of today, we have 139 active design projects and 118 active construction projects. We estimate there's about $721 million remaining to be billed on those 257 open contracts essentially over the next three years or so. Since 2014, we have awarded more than $2.1 billion in roadway contracts to your jurisdictions. You can see the lion's share, of course, is from fuel tax at about $1.9 billion. This graph shows how the dollars under contract compare to our total roadway revenues and expenses. As of the fourth quarter FY '22, the total revenues are almost $2.2 billion, which is the green line there. The red line represents the total contracts awarded, and that is more than $2.1 billion. And the yellow line represents the expenses of more than $1.4 billion. Your jurisdictions, I can assure you, are working feverishly to deliver the projects they've been awarded so our community can benefit from a world-class roadway network. And I also like to point out that that yellow line, it's hard to tell, but when you look at it closely, since 2019, that line has been bending upward, which represents an acceleration in project delivery, which is a very good thing. Everybody's working very hard.
What do you attribute that to?
A lot of, a lot of hard work. The consultants, the contractors, the public works staff have really knuckled down and are, despite limited resources, all the way around, they're squeezing every single ounce of effort out of the money that they've got.
And without any restriction on finding employees to do the work, are you having that same issue?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, the labor market's tight, both on the contractor's side and the consultant's side. The public work staffs are, you know, are limited. But despite those barriers, every year since 2019 has been better than the previous year.
I think it's really impressive, really impressive.
Very good. And that has other benefits, and that's what this slide is showing right here. The delivery of all those projects over the life of Frye since 2014 has created more than 14,000 jobs. And you can see that in fiscal year '22. That was our best single year to date for job creation at over 2,300 jobs. So that's very good as well. So now I'd like to share several of the construction projects that have been completed or are very close to being completed during the fourth quarter of fiscal year '22. Let's see here. All right. These projects highlight your agencies and contractors and consultants who are working to improve mobility and enhance safety as the RTC continues to fund roadway maintenance and improvement projects. So the first one here, there are two projects in the city of Henderson I'd like to highlight. The first one is the repaving of Ramrod Avenue and Olympic Avenue between Green Valley Parkway and Mountain Vista, as well as Athenian Drive. The improvements also included upgrading LED streetlights and sidewalk ramps, repainting pavement markings, and making traffic signal modifications. The project was completed in May with an approximate cost of $1.8 million. The second project is streets improvements, or street improvements along Greenway Road and Heather Drive. The project improvements included repaving of Greenway, as well as adding roundabouts at Heather, which is pictured. Mission Drive and Paradise Hills, additionally ADA improvements, upgraded LED streetlights, updated pavement markings, and new landscaping were also included. That project wrapped up also in May, and approximately cost of $11.4 million. The next couple of projects are in Clark County. The first project involved repaving and widening Russell Road between Rainbow Boulevard and Cimarron to provide two travel lanes in each direction with turn lanes and medians. Additionally, a new traffic signal at Russell and Buffalo was added, as well as new storm drains, sidewalks, pavement markings, and upgraded LED streetlights. This wrapped up in April, and we estimate the cost was about $14.8 million. The second Clark County project here, this included traffic signal improvements at Torrey Pines and Warm Springs and Durango and Patrick, and also Buffalo Drive and Patrick, which is what you're looking at here. Additionally, pedestrian crossing flashers were installed at Katy Avenue east of Maryland Parkway and on Las Vegas Boulevard north of La Barrera. The project also included upgrades to Median Islands on Sunset Road east of Durango and the restriping of Somerset Hills Avenue. This wrapped up in May at an approximate cost of $3.1 million. Moving up to Mesquite, and their latest traffic signal improvements at Flat Top Mesa Drive and Falcon Ridge, which is pictured, and also a signal went in at Riverside Road and Haven. The project included new pavement and pavement markings as well. That wrapped up in June for an approximate cost of $1.5 million. And there's one more that I'd like to mention. It's very close to being completed in the city of Las Vegas, a great complete streets project on Boulder Avenue between First Street and Artway. And we will have some nice pictures of that in the next report.
Thank you.
So, now a quick update on the recently approved capital improvement program for fiscal years 2023 to 2032. As a reminder, the funds are distributed to your agencies using a formula we call POP Bell. This has been in place for decades. This averages the percentage of population and the percentage of assessed property value for each agency and compares that to Clark County as a whole. The chart represents the distribution of funds for each agency for the current tenure planning horizon. Over the, over that tenure planning horizon, we are programming almost $2.5 billion, and this chart shows how that is distributed to the agencies. The, this includes fuel tax and sales tax, so local funds. There are additional federal funds as well, but this shows just the local funds. For, now just drilling in just on the first year of the program, 2023, you're going to see how each of the agencies are programming their first year of the plan. And here, this chart shows the current and future activity. Right now, there are 248 active projects in your agencies. That's the light blue bottom bar there. It should be noted that we have currently spent over $512 million on these active projects over the life of the projects to date. The second bar, the red there, represents the projects that are programmed in the first fiscal year, '23. There are 83 of those, so very busy. And finally, the purple bar on top represents the number of projects over the entire tenure plan. There are 674 of those, and that brings the total of active and future projects to 1,005. So that's a very, very robust plan. And let's see, I think this is my final slide coming up here, and it is. This is, shows you a breakdown of project type over the life of the plan. We are spending, as you can see, the majority of the funds on maintaining existing infrastructure and improving new roadways. However, I'd also like to point out that over the next 10 years, there's approximately $626 million, or 18% of the plan over those 10 years, programmed for safety improvements to vulnerable and road, vulnerable road users, including pedestrians and bike riders. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? I was on a call the other day with Mitch Landrieu and Michael Bloomberg, and they were talking about the infrastructure dollars that were coming to the streets. And there's a first grant cycle application, I think that's September 15th, if I'm correct on that. And so I don't know if that's something that we're looking into to make sure that we at the local level are being able to access this. And I think a lot of these dollars are intended for the local level as well. So it's something that you all might want to coordinate on. And obviously, you're getting resources to the streets, and we appreciate that. Are you making sure too that there's coordination between the various agencies so that there isn't a road disruption, say if there's a, some continuity between the county and the city of Las Vegas or Henderson, to make sure that, that we're coordinating with one another so that we don't have multiple disruptions?
Absolutely. That's always top of mind. Each agency has a utility coordination meeting internally. They also talk to each other regularly. We've put together our regional project coordination map that's open to the public that shows everything from the entitlement, from when private projects get entitled all the way through the construction of both private and capital projects. So, and it's complete with the scope of the project, who the project managers are. So that helps facilitate those conversations. But yes, it is absolutely top of mind.
Thank you. Commissioner?
And Chairman, through you, just wondering, technology, the growth development change, whatever, that's built into the infrastructure piece here that was on your last slide?
Like ITS, the intelligent transportation systems?
Well, and into all the improvements, as you're putting lighting in and everything where you're monitoring, you've got your lights coordinated, everything else.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's all part of it.
Absolutely, yes.
So do we tap on each entity, each municipality for input on that, or we have a consultant? How are you handling?
Well, it's both. The individual agencies hire consultants to help them with that, and that's all part of the scope generation at the beginning of the projects to make sure those things are included. And as long as it is within the right of way and for a transportation purpose, that's all eligible for Frye funding. And then, of course, the sales tax, that's, that's, we can spend the sales tax on pretty much anything. So yes, it's all included.
But if in fact law enforcement, fire and rescue have the capability to take lights in all directions and make them flashing, that will come through?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. All the traffic signals have what they call preemption devices that allow them to communicate with emergency vehicles, and there's interoperability, so everybody's building to the same standard.
So that's just a piece?
Just a piece, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? MJ?
Thank you. Thanks, JP. And this concludes your CEO report. The next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation's Director's Report from Director Christina Swallow. Director?
Good morning. I am going to start today with safety, like I have for the last three and a half years, and we're going to continue to do this. I'm doing a little bit of a deeper dive on safety today, though. So, as you can see, we continue to have fatality numbers that are higher than last year. And as we remember, last year was a record year. I think it was the highest in more than a decade. As we look at this, as of June, end of June, 187 people have been killed on Nevada roadways. That's up 2%, nearly 2% from same time last year. Clark is one of five counties that is experiencing increases in fatalities. The other four are Douglas, Elko, Pershing, and Washoe County. Clark is at 128 people who've been killed on the roads this year versus 100, which is 20 more than last year. Not, not a place we want to be, and it's an 18.5% increase compared to last year. So as I mentioned, and we're going to do a little bit deeper dive, I have a couple slides on this, and we're going to be talking about one of those top contributors that you've seen on the slides. For at least a year and a half, I think we've been seeing it on the slide for the last three and a half years, speeding. Speeding is not just a behavioral issue. It can be enabled and influenced by traffic safety policies as well as road design, and that's why speed management is such a critical part of our road safety program. Our team has launched in 2021, spring of 2021, a speed management action plan to really look at what the strategies are to manage speeds on all roadways in Nevada. And we've been working with partner agencies, including many of yours, to identify the most effective engineering enforcement, emergency medical, educational countermeasures and strategies to reduce those speed-related crashes in a consistent and equitable manner. The strategies can be used across both state and local roads. It is the NDOT Speed Management Action Plan, but we've been working with our local partners and are hoping that all of the partners will also adopt some of these strategies to make sure that our roads are safe for everyone. Some of the identified countermeasures include the use of cutting-edge technology, such as strategic monitoring sites. One of those sites, we drive, we probably all drive by it on a regular basis, is right there on southbound I-15, just south of Spring Mountain. There's an elevated pad where sometimes Nevada State Police locate themselves. By having them there, it helps calm and harmonize the speed along I-15, which reduces crashes. Other strategies, some intersection countermeasures include modern roundabouts, mini roundabouts, textured surfaces, raised intersections, and vertical deflection. We haven't, we don't have a lot of those in Nevada, but that is something that more places are starting to, to use rather than having to do ramps down to the surface, actually raising the whole intersection up. So it's the ramps, just if you're, if you're walking or biking, you're just already at the grade of the intersection. Other strategies include communications and education, examining speed and speed relating, speeding-related data, setting different speed limits, designing for speed management. So I'm going to just go a little bit of the data. So this slide, what's interesting to me about this, and there's a lot of data on there, but roads with speed limits greater than 60 miles an hour, so those are a lot of our NDOT roads, the roads you think of as NDOT roads, all of the controlled access roads. They result in over half of the speeding-related crashes, but less than a third of the fatal and serious injury crashes. So even though more than half of the crashes are occurring there, less than a third of the fatal and serious are happening there. On the other hand, those, those roads I think that we think of generally as the arterials, NDOT has a few of those, but they're mostly the local roads, those that are posted at 30 to 49 miles per hour. They're, they're just, well, they're about a third of the crashes, but they're almost 50% of the fatal and serious injury crashes. So that's why it's so important that while we're developing Speed Management Action Plan, and we're doing this on, for us, that's why we're making sure to work with all of the local agencies and are hoping that your agencies will adopt some of these strategies because the larger share of the crashes or the fatal and serious injuries are actually on the local roads.
Is some of this roadway design, or?
Some of it is. I think some of it is where you have the higher concentrations of pedestrian, people who are walking and people who are biking. There's a, there's a lot that goes into it. If it was easy to solve this problem, we would have already solved it. This is going to be hard. And so that's why we all are going to have to work together. Speaking of which, though, you mentioned design, and I don't know that all of the answers on this, but one of the things that we found is if you look at, if you look at the fatality rate by race and ethnicity, it is not equitable across our communities. The impacts are, you can see the total fatalities per 100,000 by race, Hispanic or Latino and American Indian and Alaska Native, are overrepresented. But when you dive into, which is bad, and when you dive into speeding-related, specifically speeding-related, you see Hispanic or Latino and Black and African-American populations are overrepresented even more so. And so this is helpful. In the 2021 legislative session, there was a requirement put in to really start collecting this data. This is Nevada data, but we don't have all of the data. It's not regularly collected. Since that legislative effort in 2021, it is going to be more, more data is going to be collected. We're going to be able to really learn from this, and hopefully that will help us all figure out, well, where do we need to invest our safety dollars? How do we really need to make sure that we're improving the roads so that it is safe for everyone, regardless of your mode or your race or ethnicity?
Yeah, I actually am not surprised by these numbers. It seemed like in the city of, in the city of Las Vegas, Charlton, that stretch, I think, that goes here in east Las Vegas, more or less, I think, between I-15 and Nellis, that was like a, that was like a death alley until, quite frankly, that barrier that was put on there. You have kind of heavily, heavily populated neighborhoods there, big apartments, and people were dashing across until the city saw fit to invest in those barriers in the middle. And I noticed we get a lot less reports of fatalities. I guess I'm not really surprised, again, that there are way more fatalities on these roads because when you're driving on a highway, a freeway, you have basically less access to travel to have to look for. There's no cross traffic. And goodness, for goodness sakes, there's a lot less pedestrians trying to run across, you know, a highway compared to people doing this on our major thoroughfares. Again, we have seen fit to put in many of those flashing, and I can't see how you could not see them because the flashing lights that you put in the picture, the yellow ones, you can see them a half mile down the street, even on a bright sunny day. And I, I think, I did see one guy cheating it just yesterday, right? It was in my neighborhood, a Latino. But for the most part, people are respecting those, and I, I think they've been, they've been fantastic. I started to think what we would have if we didn't have those pedestrian access blocking and less of those lights. Although I guess on the agenda later on, we're going to have a few more ideas on how we could help curb this. Again, these are not really surprising figures when we look at it. Although I do have just one minor, one minor question. No, maybe I'll save that one for later. Please.
Okay. All right. Speeding-related citations, I think I've covered this in the past, but just to, just to focus and an awareness, speeding, speeding citations for over 100 miles per hour have dramatically increased since 2019. I'm going to note, that's just the ones that were caught. So there is, there is an element of behavior in here. It's not just the design, it's also behavior, which is good. One of the good things about the IIJA, it's allowing us to flex some of our safety revenue back to behavioral programs, which we weren't allowed to do under the past two bills. So we're excited we're going to be able to start doing that and really start investing in more behavioral campaigns. But it's not just behavior, right? It's also the roadway network. So what are we doing? So the next steps on our safety, Speed Management Action Plan, I like to say that we are going to continue to evolve our process and continue to develop and incorporate actions and strategies and countermeasures. And I say that because we've already been doing some of these things, but this is like the formal document. So some of the things I've already been working on, and I'll give an example. I don't think I've encountered this here in southern Nevada, but I know that it, I'm sure it's happened in the past where we get the ask to NDOT to look at the, to do a speed study. You know, everybody on this road, you have it posted at 45, everybody's going 60. You know what? Can you do a speed study because we need to adjust the speed limit? And in the past, we would do the speed study, and we'd come back and we'd be like, yeah, you know what? Everybody's going a lot faster than that posted speed limit, and we would adjust the speed limit. Since I've been at NDOT, I have challenged the team to look at the underlying assumptions. If it's posted at 45, why did we post it at 45? What was the reason for that? What was the context of the road? Is that, are those reasons still valid? If those reasons are still valid and the road should be at 45, then what do we need to do to get compliance with 45? Versus, we don't have compliance, so we're just going to change it, but the context didn't change. It could be a school, it could be senior housing, it could be any number of things. It could be a transit corridor where we know we have lots of people that are crossing to get to where their destination is. So that is one of the things we've already changed, but it's also something that we're baking into this, you know, Speed Management Action Plan. So as we roll out these strategies, as our local partners roll out the strategies, we're hoping that we're all going to be looking at and evaluating their effectiveness. And then in five years, we're going to re-update the Speed Management Action Plan as well. But along the way, it's, it's an evolving process, it's a learning process, and it's something that I think we, we can all do to sort of take ownership of actions that maybe can drive to a safer system. So thanks for taking a minute with me to look at one of the things that we're doing to hopefully counter, counteract one of the main causes. All right. HOV update. Just a reminder, I talked a little bit about this last month. We are installing those sensors along the HOV system to look at and identify the number of vehicles and the number of occupants in those vehicles within the HOV lanes. I had hoped that we'd be able to do it across all of the lanes because we do know that people are carpooling in the general purpose lanes as well. But we can't because of the nature of the system. We really have to have both a side look and a, and a front look on the vehicle, and we can't get a side for those general purpose lanes. The technology is new and advanced technology. Apparently, it's so hot in Vegas that when you get your windows tinted, they use a specific type of tinting that has a ceramic coating to it that is not used broadly across the nation. So our vendor needed to develop a new technology to be able to look through that ceramic coating, which is sort of cool and interesting, and help us advance technology and learn from that. Those are going in. It is leading to some lane closures. I saw a tweet just the other day about lane closures while we were installing them. But we're working to make sure that we understand who's using the system, how the system is being used. And we're hoping that we'll have all the information we need to identify whether or not we can roll back some of the 24/7 and what that is going to look like. We're hoping to have those recommendations here later this summer. And if they recommend any adjustments in the hours of operation, we anticipate those would go into effect in the fall if any are recommended.
So would that be what the pilot would look like, that you would do some adjusted times just to see what the traffic looks like and how it changes?
So based on those recommendations, if they recommend a change in the hours of operation, we would sign it, we would post it, and we would monitor it. For sure, we will be monitoring on a quarterly basis and then adjusting as needed. We're hoping we get it right in the first place because every time we have to change signs, it has an impact. But if, if we find that we should have done more or done less, we will make those adjustments on a quarterly basis. I will note, if we see a dramatic safety degradation in the first 30 days, we're not going to wait 90 days to, to change. So we're going to be, and that's an 18-month process of making sure that those hours are the right hours at that point. All right. Centennial update. If you live in the Northwest Valley, you're very familiar with this project. It is the system-to-system interchange connecting 95 to the 215 in the Northwest Valley. Last month, we started a 90-day closure of the off-ramp from southbound 95 to Anne Rancho and Centennial. And that's needed to build a new bridge for a multi-use trail system, which is a major enhancement for bike riders and pedestrians. And I should note that this is actually connecting the 215 trail from one side of the 95 to the other side of the 95. I, I was actually at the city of Las Vegas when the NDOT was working on. on these plans, and they had identified for this system, you know, this valley-wide trail, this 215 trail, there was no clean way to cross the 95 at that location. And, and there were lots of different options. They're like, well, you have to go through all of this retail, or you have to go up and it'd be five extra bridges. And the city approached NDOT and asked if NDOT could figure out a way to put it on, on these bridges. And kudos to the city folks, kudos to the city folks, NDOT, kudos to NDOT. They figured it out, and that's why we're having this ramp closure, though, which is causing slight inconvenience for others. But it will make it safer for anyone who wants to go from one side to the other and doesn't have a car to do so. And then I think my last, oh, no, I got two more. I-515 viaduct. Earlier this week, we wrapped up marathon work weekend, last weekend. Both directions of the freeway were reduced to one lane. Our second marathon weekend is this one. It'll start Friday. The freeway will be down to one lane through 5:00 AM Monday. So Friday night through 5:00 AM Monday, another marathon week, weekend. 515 will be down to one lane in each direction. They're needed for the restriping and paving as we look forward to the end of work on this project. And as a reminder, we were anticipating it would go through the end of the year, and we're actually looking to wrap it up here late this summer. So we're excited to be ahead of schedule. I know sometimes these marathon weekends can be painful, but if that allows us to get the work done that much faster, it's worth it. All right. Last project, I-15 Tropicana interchange. Right now, most of the work is overnight as crews are laying groundwork for the new ATM signs that will be online during the early phases of the projects. We will have 24/7 lane restrictions on I-15 coming up later this month to start foundations for those ATMs. Bringing those signs online, as I mentioned, I think previously, will really help us with our traffic control during the later phases of the project. And, and we'll have the benefit when we're not in those later phases of already helped smoothing the traffic. We know if you're northbound on I-15, those queuing, that slowing and queuing can happen south of Tropicana, but we don't have the ATM signs to guide that. So this will help us with that as well as serving to help with traffic control during the construction. And then one last thing, we are working in our final testing phase of an app for the I-15 Tropicana. So we'll have that out on iPhone and Android later this month. So I'll be telling you about it next month for folks that are really just interested in having that more up-to-date data on the progress of the project. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Chairwoman. Thank you very much for a fantastic report. It's not quite the same thing, but I did want to acknowledge here at one point, I wanted to thank the Metro Police and their anti-racing team for working with the North Las Vegas Police Department and bringing to control a pattern of racing that was happening out on the 93, out in my, in my Apex area. They were deciding to race right in front of where gas, gasoline trucks pick up their loads of gasoline and drive down. You guys should know that there's a, there's actually a gas lane that ends over here in Apex, and that's where about 45 to 50% of the gasoline that you pump in your vehicles, it gets pumped in there and it gets loaded into semi-trucks, you know, the big tankers full of like boom-boom explosive. And these guys are racing up and down that avenue. And so with some intelligence that was gathered from both agencies, they were able to make a few dozen arrests, which I'm very, very happy. That's a very fantastic inter, inter-local police enforcement, and I was really happy for that. It does bring into question, though, that perhaps we know that there is a culture of racing, and there's not really a facility that is set aside to allow for, I'm totally against racing on public streets. I'm appalled when I, when I look, I don't go on Facebook very often, but I get these like reels that come in, and you see people doing stunts on motorcycles, right, on public right-of-ways and other places. I find that appalling. It's, I, but we do have to have a place for people to express this, and that facility as yet does not exist. Apparently, there's some sort of an issue with Speedway, with some of their facilities they have over there, which would be great, but I guess the ownership does not agree, or they, they charge a very high price. Perhaps it would take some, perhaps if we, as a region, the regional leaders could, I guess, it's one thing for little Councilman Barone to go ahead and talk to the Speedway people, right? But it'd be a different thing if all of a sudden we had multi-agencies talking to our friends at the Speedway, right? And, and help, you know, maybe in the short term until we have a more permanent solution, perhaps all of us together come to them and make them understand just what a big problem this is, and maybe to, you know, open up one of the facilities. They do have fantastic facility, which I guess our police, the Metro Police, did do train on to do high-speed, you know, maneuvers. And I couldn't see why that could not be, you know, I mean, for, a community that really needs some support from them, it would be a very good gesture, you know? I mean, we are the hand that feeds them. And I just think that if it was a multi-jurisdictional approach to our friend there at the Speedway, perhaps we can get them to cooperate in the short term. So there is an outlet for these racers, so they can do their motorcycle tricks, you know, after having waived, signed waivers, so if they fall off and hurt themselves and get a boo-boo, that, you know, perhaps they, they won't sue them. Or they can, you know, do drifting. It'd be way better to do a drifting in one of those huge lots out there, you know, rather than trying drifting in someone's parking lot, which happens all the time. So I'm just putting that out there. And I think there's probably a few other things that we could probably do as a regional jurisdiction. I, I don't believe in punishment, that punishment only goes so far. You really have to educate people and, you know, entice them in different ways. But if all of a sudden people's cars are, if people's cars are being assessed fines, and if these fines are pretty heavy, and if we're confiscating cars and, you know, it could have unwanted effects. But if you have people's cars that are, you know, impounded and given very stiff fines, rather than, you know, finding the person, you confiscate the car and attach a heavy lien to it, well, that might change also a few people's minds and perhaps encourage them. If we can get some cooperation from the Speedway, it might encourage them to go ahead and try their antics at an appropriate facility. That's just my two cents. Thank you so very much, Ms. Wallow. And is there a place that I could actually access this to share with my police department and, and my public works?
Access what?
Access your, your report.
Yeah, we can, we can get it to you.
Thank you so very much. I really do appreciate that. As always, I look forward to your reports.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Maybe, Mr. Gilbert, you could look at the liability of, of doing something like drifting and what that cost would be.
I love, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Your next item is to approve your consent agenda, which consists of items five through 46 and can be taken in my motion.
Can I have a motion to approve? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And that motion carries.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The next two items, 47 and 48, regard ratifying emergency contracts. I'll ask Deputy CEO Francis Julian to provide detail to that.
Thank you, MJ. Francis Julian, for the record. Good morning, Board, Chairwomen and Board members. The RTC Paratransit Department requests ratification of the emergency contract with Creative Bus Cell and RO Bus Cell for 16 American with disability vehicles to avoid a disruption in service due to a lack of paratransit vehicle. A disruption of paratransit vehicle would constitute an emergency under Nevada Revised Statute NRS 332 dot 112 dot 1B because it would impair access to essential day-to-day transportation need. Just as an overview, our delivery of AD paratransit vehicle that were slated for dismay because of supply chain issue were pushed to November. And with some of the parts from Ford that are backed up with supply chain issue, we had over 100 engines that were out of service. So those vehicles are really, really helpful, and they're now in service. So per NRS 332 dot 112, contract necessary to contend with the emergency may move forward without complying with the requirement of NRS 332. In such, emergency action was taken by the authorized representative. The representative shall report, report it to the governing body at the next regular scheduling meeting, which is now.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Could I ask one question, please? Madam Chairman, are these electric or gas?
They're gas.
Gas.
We, we actually were, had to take vehicles that were on the lot. So we actually went over the country, across the country to purchase all these vehicles.
Are you allowed to share where they were made?
They're made in the U.S.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
So can we have a motion on 47 and 48?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And that motion carries.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Thank you, Chairwoman. The next item, 49, is to receive information from our legal counsel. Is there no items to discuss? We move on to your last agenda item, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
Thank you. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone, provide your comment, state your name for the record. We have a number of cards here. Dennis Hennessy is the first.
Good morning, and thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. Is that on? Commissioners, thank you. I missed last month's meeting because I came a week late. But let's review what's happened in terms of safety and security on our buses in the last month. We had a gun-wielding hostage situation on the Charleston route. We had a guy shooting up signs near Mandalay Bay that ditched his gun and hopped on a deuce bus on the strip. That metro pulled the bus over. And last night, whether you're aware of it or not, on the Flamingo Route, we had a passenger put his head through a window going after the driver. By the time our BOC called the operator back, it was a new driver, there were four squad cars and paramedics there. My point, we don't need a radio component that's late at getting to a driver when they need help, that wants to determine whether that driver's necessity is important. If one of my brothers or sisters or I call and say we need security, we need security. It's not up to somebody in a room to determine what we need or don't. I don't care if it's from a chronic fare evasion, for a guy giving us problems. If I call, it's something I can't handle on the bus. So we don't need that kind of determination. I hope you all did your homework assignment for two months ago, and you all know who Jimmy is. If you don't know who Jimmy is, that tells you the absolute nuts that the RTC is at putting out policies. Marksmen, I see you have three of them here. We don't get that kind of attention on our buses. What's more important to our passengers and drivers? Again, I stated two months ago, you have an obligation to provide safe, clean, on-time passage for your, for your passengers. But you have a requirement to provide a safe work environment for me. What we don't need is these companies having feel-good meetings to talk about what is wrong. We know what's wrong. We need companies that are going to maybe push you guys to protect us. I don't need, like I had, I've been on vacation this week, so I can't give you this week, but last week on Friday, the squeaky wheel is how I'm getting paid attention to. I had two marksman guys get on my bus. All day long, I had a guy on my bus.
Oh, you bet, shortly.
And when I asked them, oh, no, we were assigned this route. We were assigned this route. I picked a guy up later. I was assigned this route. Guys, our safety, maybe you guys, you all represent a city and a county, maybe the liability needs to fall on you guys. I'm ashamed that none of our news media comes forward to, 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 to report on this. It's not there. It's hidden. Nobody. Not the RJ, none of them. We need your help.
Thank you.
What we need is agenda items that are addressed every meeting and not just approved. Letting us and the public know that safety is important to you, bro.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Cynthia Paulfree. Cynthia Paulfree?
She had to leave.
She had to leave, okay. Sandra Adams?
Good morning. I'm Sandra Adams, Vice President of ATU Local 1637. I'm here on behalf of almost 900 drivers. We were notified to meet with the company on July 8th about an upcoming bid. Why is it that the RTC is sending them stuff at the last minute? We have no knowledge of what's going on. We met with them. They gave us the book. The first three pages I looked at is our graveyard. They start at midnight, 1:00 in the morning, they drive to 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, 11 and 1/2 hour runs with one to two hour splits. That's unacceptable. It's 100-plus degrees out there. We're driving all day. The buses are breaking down. We got no air. We've been meeting with this, with this company for the last four years on our paddles. I've been promised that it's going to change. This lady that's doing our paddles, I don't know where she is, but she doesn't care. And nobody is addressing it. Nobody is telling her that this has, this has to stop. We got to look out for our drivers. You know, I got drivers with 30 years that can't even go in there and find a decent paddle. If I've been working for 30 years, if I don't want to drive Las Vegas Boulevard, I should not have to. But that's everywhere. Nobody has a decent paddle that they can find. People 15, 20, 25 and 30 years, there's nothing decent for us to do. I've been promised, we've been meeting, I'm tired of meeting. Nothing is happening. Nobody cares about us because our paddles show that. We got a person that's been getting paid for being a planner for four years that's not doing the job. So where are we considered? We go outside to get in our cars. Our catalytic converters are stolen off our cars. You know, one morning I came into work, I tell them, I said, go out in the lot. There's somebody out there under a car. You know, we shouldn't have to do that. There should be somebody watching our cars when we come to work. We come to work and work hard, and we get ready to go home, we can't go because part of our car is missing. But I'm tired of being lied to. I'm tired of being just treated any kind of way. You know, slavery was abolished in 1865. We getting treated like slaves. Something needs to be done. We're always being told RTC is sending them stuff at the last minute. You know, they sent stuff to them on June 29th, and then July 8th, we tell them we got a bid on July 18th. What's the rush? We didn't even have time to look over them or anything. It's just that this is what it is, this is what we got to do. Okay? We're the ones out there getting attacked, spit on, sweating like crazy, running to the bathroom, running back to, I'm too old to run. I'm 65 years old. I can't run. You know, and I, I come to work, you got people coming to work that always came to work on time that are missing work now. How do you drive 11 and 1/2 hours and then have a two-hour split out here in this heat? We have nothing to eat. We don't give us water or anything. Something needs to change. So I'm asking RTC, when you decide on who gets these, this route, gets a bid, I hope that you consider us because we are the ones that move this city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Leo Henderson?
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for these, time to let us speak. My name is Leo Henderson. I'm also a candidate running for Nevada State Senate. I'm also want to, ATU Safety Committee Labor Management. I'm going to talk about safety and security. Sandra Sanders already said enough in regards to that. Mr. Francis, you know, we need to work together, be proactive. MJ, we have to be proactive, not reactive. Our people are suffering. There's no more sweeping under the rug. Biden passed a law that we're going to report every to the federal administration or Transportation Administration. We should work together. We should not be pooping these drivers in these situations. I speak for my constituents as well in District 2. They tell me that they don't feel safe. My drivers tell me they don't feel safe. If RTC cannot handle the load, then it's time for every city to have their own transit system. Marksmen, they do a good job, but their hands are tied. They cannot do their jobs like they used to when they came in. Without security, like Dennis Hennessy said, our passengers don't feel safe. Our drivers don't feel safe. I took action to run for Senate because enough is enough. I took action to run for Senate because enough is enough. We all sit here, I don't know if you guys are on the bus, but if you don't, get on the bus with us for a whole week and see what we go through. I love my job. I love driving. I love my community, but I love my drivers, too. I want to make sure they're protected and the passengers. Anybody getting in my bus, I tell them, this is my vessel. I'm the captain. No more verbal abuses, no more assaults. It's going to stop here. So together, we can make it happen. You know, we all have to work together. Please, we, like Sanders, Sanders said, we make the city move. Without the drivers, the city goes stop. We need the drivers. We can't even keep the drivers. One, because they're not getting paid enough. Okay? Wages are going up, I mean, excuse me, inflation is going up, gas is going up, rent's going up, food's going up, and there's people living paycheck by paycheck or even losing their homes, their cars, and some of them committing suicide because they cannot take this no more. And I'm not just talking about my drivers committing suicide, I'm talking about the people, constituents, okay? So we need to work together. That's all I ask. Think about us when you guys make a decision and try to make it better for us to drive our passengers, you know, safely to their locations. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next is Francesca Parker.
Mayor, Commissioner, MJ Francis. My name is Francesca Parker. I am ATU Safety Committee Board Member as well as a driver for MV Transportation. I started January 20th, 2020. I was a seniority number 486. Today, I am 312. So it shows you right there that we can't keep any drivers, not just because of security, but because of wages. Seventeen fifty an hour in this city is not enough. We definitely have to make more money. This is why we lost so many drivers. I love driving. I got three degrees, I can do anything. But the thing is, if you don't love a job, why do it? And so I love this job, I don't want to leave, but because I only make seventeen fifty, I can't even barely pay my rent. So something has to be done when you're making a decision with the company who you bring in here because we have to eat, we have to feed our families, we have to pay our rent. And with what my brothers and sisters said as far as security, our bus drivers are getting assaulted every day because people are standing up on bus stops in 112 degrees. They mad at you because they had to wait on the bus. Everybody can't afford a car. So the passengers who are out here waiting for transportation, we are the first ones to get the backlash of what they went through to get here on this bus stop every morning. We have to do something to protect our drivers. We have to do something to protect our passengers because they're out there on the bus line waiting as well as us waiting for them to load onto our buses. I'm asking that when you do decide what company is going to get the new bid, that you consider these things. Consider keeping people employed instead of a high turnover rate. I have never worked for a company in my life that we lose almost 200 drivers in less than a year and a half. We have to do something. We have to do something for this city. Where I come from, we got city and bus, we got buses and trains. We don't have that option here. So because we are the ones that move this city, you don't want to keep continually providing training and retraining and retraining until you get more drivers. You have to want to say, I want these people to stay with my company and appreciate what they work at. It's just not happening. I have never seen nothing like this in my life, coming from a big city like Chicago. So all I'm saying is just consider whoever you pick that consider you don't want to keep losing bus drivers. It costs us a lot of money to keep retraining people. When you got people who love this job and will stay at this job if you guys do right by us, that's all. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. And my last card is Eric Hupp.
Good morning, Board Members, Madam Mayor, RTC. My name is Eric Hupp. Last time I was here, and normally when I go to RTC or to MV, I come before you to complain, problems with everything that's going on within our service. I'm not here for that today. Today, I'm here to applaud RTC and the addition of the vans that they purchased. It's not optimal. Buses would be better. They're not available. The vans are safe. Our passengers love them, as I've been driving them, and they're going to make a difference in our paratransit operation. We can now get, we have hope to get people to dialysis and their appointments on time to pick them up and to not have them on the bus for three hours. So on behalf of my fellow drivers and all the passengers that I've talked to, thank you very much, especially Mr. Julian, who made the move to purchase these buses to get them into us. As MJ, who is his senior, that allowed it to happen, I appreciate it. We need it. We need more of that kind of decisive action when it comes to paratransit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? You know, I'd just like to share that our bus drivers are very important to us, and we are working to create a culture of transit in our community, and it's important that we depend on you to move our community around, and you are at the front end of that, and we appreciate that. And certainly, I think we've all been challenged by the changing times with the inflation, and we're working hard to try to address that, to make sure that you're paid appropriately in this market. You are important to us, and we value the work that you do, and please know that. Are there any other comments or questions from?
Well done.
Thank you very much, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day, everyone.
Nice comment at the end. Yep.